Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a meeting of the South Kingstown Planning Board, regular session Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. It is now 7:03 PM. And as customary, I'm going to do the roll call. Maria Mack.
Here.
Elise Torello.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Yeah.
Pam Rubenoff.
Here.
Steve Demossi.
Here.
And the chair is here. We have consent agenda and the approval of the minutes for December 5th, 2019, January 14th, 2020, and January 28th, 2020.
Move approval of consent agenda items.
Yep. We have a motion from Maria, and we have a second from Steve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We're gonna, at the request of legal counsel, we're gonna change the order for number one and number two, just flip it. So we're gonna do number, number two first, and that's the final plan review, major land development project Marina and Shellfish Hatchery operations.
Elizabeth Noonan on behalf of MTK ESM LLC, and Perry Rasso is also here this evening. As you may recall, we were back here in December, or actually November, and then a December 3rd, 2019 decision on preliminary plan. At that time, one of the issues that had come up was some additional landscaping, which is condition number 12 of that preliminary plan approval. And what we did then, following the condition, wait, is that the right one? Yeah. Yeah, that was the condition of approval, was after that, we resubmitted the plans to CRMC, because at that point, we had CRMC approval in hand necessarily to get our preliminary plan. And Rick St. Jean, who was the architect, I mean, the engineer on this project, went to CRMC with the plans exactly as we had presented to, to this board, and they determined that it was a finding of no significant alteration on it, and they reissued the assent. And so we are here tonight looking for the, the final approval. We submitted the revised assent to, to the planning department, and we have reviewed all of the conditions that are current and put forward in the project review memo on items 1 through 11. We have no objections to any of those. And so at this time, unless there's any other questions, we would be asking for final plan approval on this. And also, just to update you, there was a zoning appeal taken, which focused on the dimensional variances for the hatchery. And I believe it was about two weeks ago, we got a decision from the Superior Court which denied the appeal, therefore upholding the zoning board's determination of the dimensional variances on the hatchery. On appeal, the issue of the parking was not raised, nor was it addressed in the decision. So we're finished with that process, and this would be the last stage.
Thank you, counselor. Any questions from the board?
I just wanted to thank you for ensuring that our concerns relative to the landscaping were followed through. I think that the notes regarding maintenance are also very good and quite thorough. I'm assuming it will be the applicant who inspects the plantings on a regular basis?
Yes.
Anyone else? Comments? Thoughts? Suggestions?
I'll just second what Maria said. I do appreciate that you were willing to add this additional landscaping. I think it makes a difference, and it sets a great example for the rest of the community as well.
We have a motion for consideration on page 2 of 3 of the project review memo.
I'll make it. Go ahead.
The South Kingstown Plan Board hereby grants final plan approval to MTK ESM LLC, major land development project. A proposed 3,600 square foot shellfish hatchery and principal parking use located at Assessors Platt 87-2 Lot 4, with the physical address of 650 Succotash Road. This approval is based on the plan set entitled Final Plan Proposed Shellfish Hatchery Operation 650 Succotash Road, Assessors Platt 87-2 Lot 4, South Kingstown, Rhode Island. Sheets 1, C1 through C5, L1 and L2 dated September 27, 2018, with revisions through February 5th, 2020, prepared by St. Jean Engineering LLC, Structural Marine Engineers East Greenwich, Rhode Island, John Carter &amp; Company Inc., landscape architects near Gansett, Rhode Island, and the National Land Surveyors Incorporated Surveyors Windsocket, Rhode Island. This approval is based upon the outlined findings of fact and contingent upon the following conditions of approval, which is conditions of approval 1 through 11.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Joe. We have a second from Maria. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Great. Thank you so much, and on behalf of Perry and myself, I thank this board for its time and effort that it put into this application. I think it'll be a great project.
We agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Final, sorry, let's try with conceptual master plan public information meeting, major subdivision comprehensive permit village at Curtis Corner.
Good evening. I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant 5A Builders LLC. We're here tonight on a continued master plan public hearing from last month. At the last meeting, Eric Prevee, the project engineer, went over the existing conditions, proposed the engineering aspects of the plan. Since we were before you, we also went in front of the Conservation Commission. They reviewed the plans, and they determined that they didn't have enough information at this stage to really give a recommendation, one way or the other, on it. We also appeared before the Affordable Housing Collaborative, and they did make a positive recommendation. They found that designating the duplex units as affordable did meet the integration requirements as long as they were similar in size to the market rates, and as long as it was one unit per duplex building, I believe. So they didn't want to see four affordable units all in two buildings over in one side, but as long as they were dispersed, they felt it met the integration requirements. Tonight, we have Ed Pimentel, who's the, the planning consultant, and he's gonna go over his report, which he filed, and we also have Paul Bannon, who's the traffic engineer. So I'm gonna have Ed come up at this time.
Thank you, counselor.
Good evening. Ed Pimentel, for the record. So I was asked to take a look at this development, and then to provide a professional assessment as to whether I felt I could support it as a land use planner. My standard methodology, anytime I'm asked to get involved in a compromit before I get engaged, is to first and foremost, is to look at the community's affordable housing plan as a, either an independent document, or as it's laid out through the housing element of the comprehensive plan. And the town of South Kingstown has a fairly new comp plan. So it's, and this has actually come down very recently in several decisions from the, from the State Housing Appeals Board. So the State Housing Appeals Board has determined and dictated that if a community's affordable housing plan is being followed in order to meet the 10% threshold, and they've determined what their needs are, what the appropriate densities are, and provided kind of this general location areas for affordable housing, then those types of developments will be deemed to be appropriate. Those that are not in accordance with the local community's affordable housing plan are typically the ones that are not supported by the State Housing Appeals Board on appeal. Having read some of those cases recently, I've been asked to be engaged in certain affordable housing developments in the state that I've kind of walked away from because I said, "This just can't be supported, so what's the point of this?" I mean, unless you feel that the community is gonna support it regardless. This one here, I did a preliminary review, and then I told the client, "Yes, I, I feel quite confident that I can support this for several reasons." Number one, the town of South Kingstown wants to see their higher density areas dedicated to the village areas. That's in my report. Number two, the town of South Kingstown has concluded the type of housing it needs, and typically rental affordable housing is in great need. The town of South Kingstown and the town in Gansett's likewise, I'm about to do an affordable housing development there, are suffering the same consequences, and that is, there is no affordable rentals, because you can rent them at great rates to the URI students. And you can rent them by bedroom, and that's why there's been a big pushback on larger stately homes with large bedrooms, because what's happening in neighborhoods. So having said that, your comprehensive plan actually speaks highly to the situation of what's going on with the URI situation, and working with URI, hopefully for them to provide their additional housing needs that they need to meet their student requirements. So there is a great need for affordable rental. Why this is gonna work out really well, actually, is a couple of reasons. Number one, not only do you need affordable rental, not only are we going to provide eight units towards your 10% housing count, but also, in my professional opinion, I think it's gonna be an opportunity to also, on the market rate, own a unit, to give an opportunity for somebody to be able to purchase a property in a nice neighborhood, and then use that affordable rental to offset their expenses, too. So I think there's gonna be a win-win on both ends, to be honest. One thing that's always clear to me is that you must meet the integration. And integration comes in three forms. Number one, it needs to be evenly dispersed through the development. Number two, it has to represent, the affordable that's being provided has to be represented and in need of affordable housing, in this case, the rental. So it's not like we're throwing a couple of owners and some rentals, when the owners may not be required. Rental is really needed. And then third, as counsel has stated, it has to be of like materials, like scale, like size, like architectural standards. You know, you can't be providing the market rates and then using it as the density bonus to offset, and not providing a quality product in regards to the affordable housing. Finally, your affordable housing plan through your housing element states that you want the greater densities in those areas where the infrastructure's already in place, and areas that are already kind of sort of have that characteristics of the density that's being supported, and that's why you want them in the villages, whether it be the Kingston Village or the Peacedale Village. And as you well know, you know this town very well, it's behind the Public Safety Complex. There are neighborhoods along Route 108 that mirror this type of development, the density. It's all in the report. Having said all that, I think this is on point with your goals and objectives of the affordable housing plan and generally in the comprehensive plan. There are standards that have to be met pursuant to your, pursuant to the Affordable Housing statute. There are several mechanisms that this community has engaged to determine what would be an appropriate density for affordable housing. And one of those is the, that hierarchy of zoning designations, giving the density at the next designation if the site is appropriate. So what I did throughout my report, and I did this on several, several, several instances throughout the report, was to provide, what would be the density utilizing the entire acreage? What would be the density only utilizing the acreage deemed suitable for development? Because you're supposed to subtract and only consider the upland resources. And I even took, on a third scenario, I even took out a small quantity for the public right of way. So if you subtracted everything out and just considered that which would be deemed appropriate under a conventional development, and implied the hierarchy mechanism that this town has suggested, that is exactly the count. In fact, the prior proposal iteration had a slightly greater density, and that was reduced to meet these regulations of your affordable housing plan. And that's why I finally says I can support this development. I don't know if the board has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pimentel. Any questions?
Mr. Pimentel, you're not going to be speaking about the traffic study, correct?
That's correct. There are several standards that you have to meet. I'm only speaking to the two, and that was the zoning consistency and the comprehensive plan consistency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before, Paul Bannon's actually gonna discuss the traffic study. I did want to mention, I forgot earlier, when we were in front of the Affordable Housing Collaborative, one of the members there is a mortgage originator, and Joe was there, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he said that Rhode Island Housing has a loan program for first-time home buyers, duplexes with a rental as a part of it.
He thought those two were those.
Yeah. So Paul, you wanna come up, introduce yourself, and then go through your report?
For the record, Paul Bannon with Bay Group. We were retained by the applicant to assess the traffic condition in both existing and future if this development were to be approved. As part of that process, we met with the site engineer, reviewed the site plan, site access, to ensure that, you know, its location and dimensions configuration would lend to safe and adequate access. We conducted a traffic counting program along Curtis Corner Road, included automatic traffic court counts and manual turning movement counts. We inventoried the project area for land use, existing roadway geometry, horizontal, vertical geometry, roadway conditions. Then we estimated future traffic volumes along this segment of road, and then we assessed the safety in operations for both existing and future conditions. Curtis, land use in the immediate area includes a mixture of residential, commercial, and public properties, including the Public Safety Building adjacent to the east, the, some residential properties immediately budding the property, the Asa Pond across the road, there's some higher-density public senior apartment facilities to the west, and also some small commercial properties. Curtis Corner in this area, it's approximately 26 feet wide. It's curved along the northerly side, including sidewalk. It has 13-foot travel lanes in each direction with delineated striping to define the travel ways. The speed limit is posted at 25 along our frontage to the west in the vicinity of Curtis Corner Middle School. There's a school zone that goes down to 20. The traffic counting data found that the roadway to the east of Curtis Corner Middle School services approximately 4,800 cars per day. To the west, that drops off to less than 3,000. That translates into peak hours in the morning, between 7:00 and 8:00, and that's specifically associated with the Curtis Corner Middle School, with roughly 500 vehicles on the road during that one hour. The afternoon, again, specifically relating to the Curtis Corner Middle School, between 2:00 and 3:00 PM, again, roughly 450 vehicles. During the off-peak period, you're down to 200 total cars per hour on the road, which is a low volume. We looked at safety relative to the access point, looking at the roadway geometry, horizontal, vertical curvature. Along our frontage, where roughly 500, in excess of 500 feet is available based on the level and straight section of road. We did recommend, there's a lot of vegetation along the front, any part of any construction that should be cleared back to provide proper sightlines at the new point of access. Future conditions, we did a base 1% background growth, but we also, knowing that the town is considering relocating the high school to this location, we, excuse me, we added in the high school-related traffic to the roadway. Again, the morning peak would coincide with the peak of our site, but the afternoon, it wouldn't. Our commuter peak for residential land use would be after 4:00, between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, where the school peaks in the early to mid-afternoon. Based on the number of units, during that morning peak hour, we would generate a total of 16 trips, that would be four entering and 12 exiting. During the PM, we would generate roughly 21 trips, that would be 13 entering and eight exiting. Combining that with the future estimated condition, the driveway will operate a good level of service B or better. Typically, you would have one car waiting to exit the neighborhood at any one time. Bill, to answer any questions?
Questions from the board?
Yes, thank you. Looking at the future conditions, so I'm not a traffic engineer, but it seems as though in the morning, 16 vehicles entering and exiting. That seems low, but that, is that?
Typically, for residential, morning, it's roughly .75 trips per unit. In the PM, it's approximately one per unit.
And is there any difference between homes and, you know, like, larger homes and duplexes? Is there any?
Single, single-family and multifamily, and we define that. It's roughly, you know, in the morning, .7 for a single-family, .6 and change for multi, multifamily.
Couple of questions. Although you did have different values for a single-family and multifamily, I also thought they were somewhat low, considering the fact that potentially, if you think of every unit having two cars, we could have six more cars, and your numbers seem to be very low to me. So I would like a better explanation of that. And then also, in the appendix, on page 1, which is land use 210, single-family detached housing, under additional data, it says the number of vehicles and residents had a high correlation with average weekday vehicle trip ends. The use of these variables was limited, however, because the number of vehicles and residents was often difficult to obtain or predict. So can you explain that a little bit better, and if you have a margin of error?
Where are you reading from?
It's in the appendix, which is, well, it says page 1, but I think it's-
Correct.
Appendix B, and then there's a blank.
Yep.
Page 1.
In what paragraph are you referencing?
The paragraph under additional data.
whether it's building square footage versus number of employees, restaurants, square footage, number of seats. Each has an independent variable that they, some have one, some have multiple. So it's just saying, one of the measures based on number of cars per unit is hard to predict. So they use number of units, housing units. So that, that's all that's saying.
Right, but again, these numbers came out as quite low, I thought, and do you have any kind of, and I understand you plug the numbers into a formula, do you have any kind of margin of error as far as how realistic?
These are very realistic. These are hundreds of studies that have been done over many years. I've done many studies myself in residential subdivisions. What you need to understand is, we look at the one hour of the day, that peak period that, from our site and the surrounding roadway. Someone could work an overnight shift, someone could leave for work at 6:00 in the morning, someone could leave for work at 11:00. So you may have three cars in a home. Your student leaves at 6:30, quarter to 7:00 to get to school. Parent leaves at 7:30 to get to work. Another parent may work in the afternoon. So those three cars leave the home in the morning, but only one falls within that peak hour. So yes, there are cars, and that number of cars, but they all don't leave at the same time. That's the rationale in, in understanding, and that's, that is typical.
Mr. Bannon, I think what Ms. Mack is getting at is the fact that the trip generation manual for the different uses lists the standard deviation, and you can see it's listed as .27 for single-family housing to .31. And then other uses have a lower standard deviation. Does the standard deviation for this data impact your level of confidence with respect to the single-family dwellings?
No, if you, if you look, if you look at what the, yes, that is the range, but if you look at the R value in the lower right corner, it's approaching .9. So that's a very high level of confidence for these trip rates. And what they've done in the newer manual, they've, where they've lumped in all residential, they've gotten so much data, they've broken it out into urban conditions, and you can see general urban suburban conditions. So they have other data for residential and in a higher urban environment where public transit may be more appropriate versus a more general rural and suburban condition.
Can I add just one other thing to that? Traffic is, it's, it does seem kind of loose at times, and I believe that it, it really does, it just does, but, but it functions a lot like drainage does, whereas we look at, we look at peak flow, at the point that the, that water from the furthest point in a watershed meets the outfall, so that's the time of concentration that we use. We look at that time of concentration. At that point, all water on the site can be expected to be flowing at the outfall, its peak flow. So it kind of operates the same way, where we look at the peak one hour. It's not to say that hour doesn't happen somewhere fluctuating in there, but it's sort of like, you know, now I work here for the town, I leave my house at 8:15, or at 8:15, you know, whereas I used to leave at 7:00. I used to fall into this category, but now my car doesn't anymore. So not everybody leaves the house at the same time. But that doesn't mean you don't expect that there could be 70 cars leaving this neighborhood in the morning, even more, and then 70 coming back in the evening. It's just that they're not happening at that peak period when we can expect the most conflict. So that's the way it operates.
And over the course of the day, that would translate into roughly 300 trips over the course of the day.
Oh, it sounds low, and I've always said this, it's, people think that generally residential developments like this produce a lot of traffic. They really don't. It's the, it's the, the commercial stuff does, because they always have that peak period where everybody's coming home and they all get, you know, and they're all there at the same time. And also, commercial has a, this, you know, as you notice, we don't, we're not seeing what happens on weekends here, because weekends don't really, it's such a minor, the peak doesn't really happen in those, those really defined periods, so. It's just, it functions, but it does function a lot like drainage does, you know, people are just flowing.
And I, I think it's understood that the level of service would not be impacted, but again, just from a practical?
Yes, and I understand, I get that question all the time, and it's just, you know, I've done many studies myself in residential subdivisions, you know, taking counts myself, and yes, these numbers are, are actually conservative from what we've, we say. You go by a residential street and try to see a car waiting to pull out of a subdivision road, it's, typically you'll see one on any residential street unless it's a connector, connector road. You're welcome.
Wait, I just have one more question, sorry, before you. The distance between the entrance and exit of the subdivision and the light at Curtis Corner, because I, I know that that backs up, any indication of- Any indication of concern about that?
Again, that, you know, that backs up around school time. And our peak would not coincide with that.
What is the distance?
I think it's over 500 feet. Yeah.
So it's backing up to new entrances?
No, and again, that happens during that short 20-minute period around the high school. But the average queue on that approach is probably three vehicles, four vehicles.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions to Mr. Bannon? Counselor?
So as I stated earlier, Eric Privey's here. If you have any engineering questions, but we didn't have anything more to present. We've reviewed the draft motion and the conditions, and we don't have any issues with any of them.
So looking at page four of nine from staff comments, just following the order of items in particular, and I can see that, and I'm going to allude to staff on wastewater to be discussed, resolved upon condition of approval. Any comment or update relative to wastewater?
Are you talking about the downstream carrying capacity?
Carrying capacity is going to be required, but an approval on the carrying capacity prior to application for the preliminary plan.
Correct, that's our understanding. Before preliminary, we'll submit that.
Stormwater retention ponds. And it looks like that appears to have been achieved. Tree removal, there's a very large tree on the street hanging over Curtis Corner Road. And I just have it to be discussed. And you agreed to do that one?
That was...
We need to hear you guys on the mic.
There was a tree that was, I believe, overhanging the road.
Correct.
I told my son-in-law to have them tree cut and trimmed. The tree's hanging over the road. I also drove up and down that road. And when you people have a chance, I want you to take a ride up and down that road and see how many other trees are hanging over that road. And you're right, it's very dangerous during a storm, ice storm or something like that's going to shut that road off. And I spotted it when you guys explained it to me. I went out there and I told Pete, "Get my tree guy there and get it all chopped out, so at least my area is clear." But I would advise our engineering firm, our town in Indiana, to look at the rest of that road, because there's a lot of trees that are going to fall. They're old, and they're going to block that road if we get a storm.
For the record...
Especially if it's a school.
For the record, can you just state your name in the mic?
Excuse me?
State your name in the mic, so we have it.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Alex Petrucci. The order of South County Commons. I mean, 5A builders.
Great, thank you.
I just had a thought with regard to the tree or any others that may be damaged or dangerous. I think the appropriate procedure would be to have the tree warden look at them and have a finding prior to Mr. Petrucci's...
Thank you.
That's always the process, but that's if it's in a town right-of-way.
Yes.
So in this case, I believe that tree is on his right-of-way. That's why I believe we're asking for the removal in this case. Normally, yes, the tree warden inspects every tree that comes down in town right-of-way. And looking at staff, Jay, I'm looking at application supporting materials. There's two statements made here. Item number one.
Yeah, those are two... Those are two items that staff asked that the applicant clarify. I think they could be very easily addressed. There are a couple of very simple revisions, correcting the Exhibit A that was submitted with the application.
Privey, you got those? All right. Just want to go down one... Make two comments first. And as we were talking, and we heard Mr. Pimentel talk about the housing situation, the affordable housing situation. I do want to record and let people know. It's all in your packet. It's a letter dated February 14th to me. And it's from the Affordable Housing Collaborative. And they identified seven particular items that were part of this on the letter. Very much in support of the methodology, the fact that the duplexes could be owned and yet rented out. So the rental units as affordable units, seems like they appreciated this approach. And I just wanted to make mention of that. Secondly, we also have another letter from the Conservation Commission dated February 5. And this one, they felt they did not have enough information to create an advisory opinion, but they did have concerns relative to density of the project, which relates to traffic and a traffic study. And obviously, we heard from Mr. Bannon on that. And secondly, was their concern with runoff and wetlands. So those are the two letters in the packet. And I'm just going to look to Mr. Privey to the latter on runoff and wetlands. I think we're good, but if you have any other comment relative to that?
Real briefly, Eric Privey, P-R-I-V-E, registered professional engineer with Dupree Engineering. Yeah, we'll be providing more information at the preliminary plan stage as well. So we'll put together the comprehensive stormwater report, including the operations and maintenance for the long-term maintenance of all the structures, also the soil erosion and sediment control plans. So during construction, making sure all erosion controlled. So those will all be submitted to your staff. Also, we do have to go to DEM Freshwater Wetlands in advance, so that will be reviewed by the engineer at DEM Wetlands as well.
Thank you. And also, relative to the Affordable Housing Collaborative, Joe, were you in attendance at that meeting?
I was.
Do you want to make any comment in addition to the letter?
Well, I want to say that Jen did a great job as far as indicating what the concerns were and what the interest was and what the Affordable Housing Collaborative, what they liked in the project. So it being... The units being of similar size, the units being integrated, and the idea of the duplex was all favorable. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
I do want to ask a question, though. And John, I don't know if you've seen the conditions of approval, but Condition of Approval 3 states the low and moderate income dwelling unit shall be sold to a person or family with income at or below 80%. But I think that should probably read "sold or rented to," right? Since these are proposed, possibly be rented? Is that... And then the only other question I'd have, and it's really kind of towards staff, whether the Condition of Approval 4, whether that language is sufficient on the offered-for occupancy simultaneous. I think what we'd like to see is that when the project's 25% done, 25% of the affordable housing is built, when project's 50%, 50%. So I just question whether that language is sufficient or whether I should be more specific. This is Condition of Approval 4, when it talks about the... Page eight of eight. Condition of Approval 4.
So Mr. Murphy, 4 is verbatim from the state law on permits. 5 attempts to get a little more specific. So the schedule of construction, meaning building permits and, if not building permits, for sure certificates of occupancy, said schedule shall not exceed the construction of three market rate units for every one LMI housing unit. So 5 should be read as the specifics of the general statement in 4, "built and offered for occupancy simultaneously with construction and occupancy of the market rate units."
Got it.
I think it's okay as is.
I have a couple of questions as well. I understand that the request for the waiver on road width allows for the street trees, which I think should be a requirement in the motion, allows them to be put on private property. And although we have regulations in our subdivision ordinance about protection during construction, given the fact that this will be fairly dense project, how would you see those trees remaining protected moving forward? Are there garages on these properties? I don't know if that had been discussed early on.
Are there going to be garages?
Yes.
Yeah.
All of them, houses and duplexes? Okay.
There'll be different choices, obviously, for different models. And some of them will... Some will have some garages, some will have two cars, and some will have one car. It all depends on... Again, as I told you from the beginning, that I'm trying to make this workforce, affordable housing, market rate, and try to keep it into the market lower than what everybody else is doing in town. That was the whole idea of this project. And so I have to be careful on how much of this I do and carries me over the cost and then ends up in the laps of the buyers, which is the last thing I want to happen in this project. As far as the trees go, we will save trees. I don't like to cut trees down. I'm not a... I don't like to rape land. But I'm not going to leave any trees that are up. They're going to be in the way, in driveways, in construction, water lines, sewer line, gas lines. But if there's some nice trees in the backyards, even in some of the front yards, of course, I will keep them. And when I keep them, Peter always wraps them with... We put boards around them. We wrap them with wire to try to protect it, because a guy swings an excavator and next thing you know, he takes half the tree down on you. We try as best we can to save them. I mean, if you went to Michaela Court, you'll notice that I would say 70% of those houses, all those trees in the front, we saved. And that was a... But those houses, lots were bigger. Houses were set back further. It was a different... It was a different idea. This is totally different than that. And that, of course, makes the driveways longer, makes your water lines longer, makes your sewer lines water, and it costs more money, and up goes the cost of houses. So the whole idea of this is to try to keep it. When this is done, this is going to be like a little village. And I seen this village, and believe it or not, my granddaughter, maybe taken to Disney World about a year and a half ago, and they... And I went riding around. They went to the park. And I went with... They had a small development. It was owned by Disney World. And they built these little houses and little lots with country porches on the front. I don't know if you ever seen it. It's the cutest little thing you've ever seen. And it's landscaped beautifully. It's all sodded in the front, and they're very, very pretty. And that's where I got the idea from. I said, you know, this could be duplicated. I mean, you can't have steep hills. You can't have rough land. You've got to have decent land to do this on, because over there, everything's flat. It's a lot easier. But that's basically what I want to try to accomplish here.
Thanks. I think you're referring to the trees on the site as a whole, and I'm talking about protecting the street trees that you will be spending money to plant. And we want to make sure that we don't have people in the future parking under the canopy of the trees, thus compacting the soil and not ensuring their survival.
You said something about the... No street trees in the project will be on the private land? I don't have any problem with that. Because nobody takes care of it. The homeowners will take care of their own trees. The street people, they don't take care of it.
I think I made that suggestion that they end up on private property rather than the right-of-way if they were going to go with a 40-foot wide right-of-way.
Exactly.
Right? That was it.
It makes sense.
Which we're fine with.
But that's not... But that's not this table that makes that decision. It's that table.
Right.
And your reference earlier to the trees on site, because it is a fairly heavily vegetated site, I think just the limit of disturbance and defining that before and during construction will be very important.
Well, you've got to understand something else about this subdivision. The lots, excuse me. Like other subdivisions, where you have these large septic systems, and DEM makes you clear half the lot, knock everything down, ruin everything. You don't have this. You've got sewers. So we can save a lot of stuff in the back. Let me explain one thing to you. You've got to understand this. Every time I take a tree down, it costs me money. So if I don't need to take the trees down, I need to take them down near the houses, like the driveways in the front and around the... But if I could save a nice tree in the front yard, of course, I'm going to save it. If I could save some beautiful trees in the backyard, of course, I'm going to save it. It's... What are you going to do? Cut down a 20-year-old tree and plant a little tree this big? I mean, it doesn't make sense.
And not that I'm advocating for further tree removal, but at the last meeting, a couple of questions were framed about the potential of a walking path out to 108. And although Mr. Privey thought that walking through the woods is dangerous, in South Kingston, we think it's usually a good idea. So I would really like that to be explored at the preliminary stage.
I second that idea. I'm a huge fan of walk-in paths in the woods, so... You know, if this can take them out right to the bus stop on 108, I think that's a good thing.
Mr. Kenyon, any further testimony or comments?
Nope.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. I'd like to open it up to anyone in the audience. And unfortunately, I don't see any audience. So I think we're going to move on. What's the board's pleasure relative to the motion that's in the packet?
I have a couple of little tweaks to wording. And I don't even know if this is important enough. It just makes it a little more specific. And the conditions of approval... So findings of fact on page six, number three. Eight low and moderate income housing units. I would like to put a comma there and say, "while all duplexes, comma, are integrated throughout the development and are compatible in scale and architectural style to the..." And then add the word duplex market rate units. Just to, you know... I mean, there's two different kinds of units in here. And, you know, I think that we're all on board with the LMI units being rentals.
So I have no problem with the first suggestion.
Okay.
The second suggestion, now you're altering the required finding per state law. So you do need to find that... And I did discuss this with Jay. You do need to find that even though the LMI units are in the duplexes, that they are compatible with the market rate units and integrated with the market rate units in the development as a whole.
Okay.
I think you can make that finding, but I just want to caution against altering the required finding.
Okay, that's fine, then. That kind of gets rid of the other ones, too.
Conditions of approval. So we have a change to number three, which will include second, third line sold or leased.
Yes, I would add on 10, the applicant shall research walking path to Route 108 for the preliminary stage of review. And then I guess this question is for either Rich or Jay. How can we put a requirement for street trees, even though they're not going to be the traditional street trees within the town's right-of-way?
You know, on a subdivision application such as this, I don't believe there's any landscaping trigger that we can hang our hat on to say that they should have them. You could always use the term encourage the applicant to try to preserve as much of a streetscape with existing trees as possible, but I don't believe there's any mechanism in our subdivision regulations that would allow us to require it.
I think that's correct, but I'm not prepared to give a definitive opinion tonight, so let's hold that for the next stage of review.
Okay.
I do think you certainly can use, you know, the encouragement language.
Okay, so we have number 11, which is to research the walking path to Route 108.
Number 10.
I'm sorry, number 10, correct.
Do we need to say anything about trimming vegetation on Curtis Corner Road to preserve sightlines or improve sightlines? That was in the traffic study.
So I'm wondering if maybe we just have something about when we're talking about the landscaping plan, that it should include X, Y, and Z, or we would encourage it to include trimming those trees and encouraging them to maintain streetscape. Is that possible? Just put those in one?
Well, there won't actually be a landscape plan, from my understanding, correct?
In the preliminary.
Part of the traffic study mentioned cutting back the access.
Right, on Curtis Corner, not within the development, actually on Curtis Corner.
So Elise, you're just alluding to what Mr. Bannon identified in his report? Okay.
Mr. Kenyon, there will be a landscape plan submitted to preliminary.
Yes, we plan on submitting a landscape plan, and we'll agree to providing an installation and maintenance plan for the street trees.
Excellent. And there's an assumption there'll be a homeowners association of sorts? Yes?
There will, but I don't know how much they're going to do, because it's going to be a town road.
That's not very optimistic.
Town road sewers. So there's not a lot for them to participate in, but maybe there's going to be some landscaping or feature out front that they... Drainage, yeah, so. Right, but with the number of houses, it's probably going to be pretty minimal per house, which will keep down the affordable requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay, what John alluded to before, and some of the things that needed to be accomplished, the application supporting materials, do we need to have any of that requirement in the conditions of approval?
Yeah, it couldn't... It won't hurt. That Exhibit A should be... We can make a conditions finding that Exhibit A be resubmitted and corrected to indicate the R20 zoning district requirements would permit 14 dwelling units, not 16.11.
We can make that condition number 10.
11. So Steve, give that to me again, your condition.
It was just what he said. It referred to the action item that was left open for...
Page four. Okay.
That you actually had brought up. It was supporting documentation, supporting materials.
I understand. Okay, right, item.
I mean, you could actually take that paragraph of those two items and...
Insert it there.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions on the board?
John, just to clarify, did we decide that we were going to have a note number 11 or 12, that condition that says, within the landscaping plan, include this and this and this? Or is that just assumed, that we'll just catch it at the next?
At the preliminary.
Okay. Thank you. I'm fine.
So I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion from Maria to close the public hearing. Do we have a second? Elise, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So we have a motion. It's found on page six of nine, at the very top. If someone would like to make it.
Mr. Chairman, who seconded that? I missed it.
I'm sorry.
Elise. Thank you.
You going to make it, Elise?
Sure. The South Kingstown Planning Board hereby grants conceptual master plan approval to the Village at Curtis Corner, a 24-lot major subdivision, submitted as a comprehensive permit to contain 16 single-family dwellings and eight duplex structures for a total of 32 dwelling units, with 24 of these units being market rate housing units and eight being restricted low and moderate income housing units located on Curtis Corner Road, 5A Builders LLC owner applicant. This approval is based upon plan set entitled Master Plan Submission, the Village at Curtis Corner, Curtis Corner Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, assessors plat 40-4, Lot 55, Sheets 1 through 5, dated June 6, 2019, with revisions through January 3, 2020, prepared by Dupree Engineering to Stafford Court, Cranston, Rhode Island, 02920. This approval is based on the following findings of fact and conditions of approval. Findings of fact, 1 through 8 as amended. Findings of fact, requested relief, 1 and 2. Conditions of approval...
Amendment of number 3.
Amendment of number 3, and it's 1 through 12?
11.
11? 1 through 11 as amended.
Second the motion.
We have a motion from Elise. We have a second from Steve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we take a brief recess? Two minutes? Okay, thanks.
We're going to have to... This can be a request from legal counsel that this item be continued. We, on review, we are going to need to request, and by we, I mean Mr. Murphy with assistance of legal counsel, approval from the Rhode Island Ethics Commission for him to appear before the board. So it's not enough to simply recuse. You need a specific permission, what's called a hardship exemption, from the Ethics Commission in order to represent yourself before your own board. So we will pursue that. I don't know if it should be continued or just tabled indefinitely while we pursue that approval. I expect that it will take one month at the soonest and perhaps two months at the latest to get that. So this can come back, but we can't act on it tonight.
Amy, if he had a lawyer representing him?
Wouldn't... You still need permission to either appear personally or have a representative appear on your behalf.
So, Amy, since it's a pre-application rather than a master plan submission, does it really matter if it's continued or tabled?
It doesn't really matter.
Right.
Thank you. Any staff comments relative to some of the administrative subdivisions approved?
No. Nope.
I'll volunteer for TRC.
Which will be, Jay, TRC?
The next date of the TRC is the 11th, I believe. Yes, Wednesday, the 11th.
Okay, if there's no further items, which doesn't look like it, motion to adjourn?
Do we have a volunteer? Do we have a volunteer board member?
Yeah, we have it. Maria.
Aye.
That's okay. So we have a motion to adjourn for Maria, second. Pam, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.